Good evening. This is the Mendon Select Board, January 9th, 2023. It is 5:00 PM. And the first thing we'll do is we'll go over our agenda and to see if there's anything to add or delete. I have one addition, since the Planning, Mendon Planning Commission is meeting in a few minutes, starting at 5:15. Should they come with a recommendation for an interim zoning administrator, which I think they will, we'll add that to our agenda. So it'll be under Business, J, or we'll leave it flexible so we can move it up and down. Fred Bagley's here. Anything else to add? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for January 9th, 2023, with the addition under Business of appointment of an interim zoning administrator.
I'm second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All right, we have an agenda. Announcements. If I had anything or not. We'll start with what's on the agenda. The Select Board is accepting letters of interest to serve as a member of the Select Board. That position would go until March of 2023, so two more months, plus the town meeting. There's going to be two seats open in March for the ballot on town meeting. That'll be the day after our town meeting for the election by Australian ballot. And there's a two-year term and a three-year term. So anyone that's interested can come into the office, get the form. They need 1% of the voters, which is 10 signatures. They can sign it themselves. Residents can send more, can sign more than one person's application. And the date has to be in at the end of January, but that will be on the form. To my knowledge, Sarah, that form is not online on our website. I haven't seen it.
Well, I'm taught that you can sign on the website or on our Facebook page. I'll check that out.
Okay, but it's available if someone comes in the town office Monday through Thursday. To this point, we do have two individuals interested. We'll have to wait and see if they fill out the two- or three-year term. Also, under B, the Select Board is hiring a zoning administrator. It's a part-time position at 10 hours per week. And anyone that's interested can submit a letter of interest to saratully@mendenadmin@comcast.net. And I had one more announcement. I'll probably dig out of here somewhere. That just came today.
Larry, that posting is on the front page of our website, mendonpt.gov. And it's under the postings right on the front page.
Okay.
The internet for identification.
All right, so if anyone didn't hear that, the form for anyone interested in serving on the Select Board is available on our website under Postings. And so I don't think I'm really going to bother with any other notices. You have anything? I don't think you do. Okay, so we'll move on. We're on to administrative matters. We have our orders here to sign. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve orders for $28,523.20 and $5,884.50, and a payroll
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. We have minutes from December 12th, 2022, and December 19th, 2022. Those were given to us ahead of time. You reviewed them, you're all set with them?
I did. I did ask Sarah if we should just accept Gregory, the sheriff, as being there in the presence.
Okay. What was her answer?
Yes.
Okay. Let's look at the minutes. All right, so we'll amend the minutes. We had Deputy Gregory Ricketts here on those two meetings, so we'll add his name to Visitors' President. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 12th and December 19th, 2022, with the addition of Deputy Gregory Ricketts to the minutes.
Let's look at him.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All right. Motion passes. All right, we're at it. Okay, we're at public comment. Does anyone have any public comment? I guess not. No public comment. No one here for that. Under Business, under A, we have the Municipal Roads General Permit, what we refer to as the MRGP. Notice of Intent is due January 26, 2023, and there is a $640 permit fee. The annual report, an annual fee of $500, is due April 1st, 2023. You attending our meeting or just waiting for your other meeting?
I think we're going upstairs.
Okay. Dick Howell is here, but he's here for the Planning Commission meeting. Sarah, under clarification for our MRGP, do we need to make a motion for that, for that 640? Or I know we have the Waterset Management Division One design. Let's see. No, it is the same one.
So you should make a motion and sign the notice of intent and submit the fee.
I'll make a motion that the Chair will sign the MRGP, Notice of Intent, Permit Fee, which is $640.
Oh, I second.
Okay. All those in favor of me signing this form, say aye.
Aye. Sarah, are municipalities ever penalized if they don't, if they don't reach or meet the standards?
Um, not, no, um, not, not right now. We just completed the first phase in of the MRGP, and it was just removed by the legislature or the Department of Environment and Conservation at the end of, of the year. So the next permit date, the Notice of Intent, the next permit date is from January 26, 23 to January of 2028. It's a five-year period. So we just completed the last, we just completed a five-year period that we needed to upgrade 15% of our non-compliant segments. We were able to accomplish, we needed to update 10 segments total, and we did accomplish six. We happen to be able to four to complete, but we do believe that there are some segments that need standards that be more of a record-keeping thing. But that is something that Bill will need to follow up on. Because now we're going to be into the next requirement, which is to, is to complete high-priority segments in town by 2025.
All right, I did find, just going back for notice, this came from Robert Neus Pulling from the Rotten Regional Planning Commission, and I'm sure Sarah has already been copied on this. It's another grant opportunity. I'm just going to read it. No action. This is for information only. It's a no-match. And I'll just read it the way it's written. Got some older drafty municipal buildings in your town. Then you'll be interested in a new opportunity being rolled out to help municipalities save money and reduce energy use. In order to make municipal buildings more energy efficient, resilient, and reliable, a $45 million will soon be available from the state of Vermont. It's called the Municipal Energy Resilience Program. Municipalities can apply for free energy resiliency assessments, for grants up to $4,000 to facilitate community meetings and communications about municipal energy resilience, and for grants up to $500,000 for approved weatherization, thermal efficiency, and more efficient renewable or electric heating systems projects. There is no local match included. The Rotten Regional Planning Commission will be working directly with you throughout the process. While specifics for the program are still being worked out, we have determined that the first step is to inventory and prioritize your buildings. Eligible municipal buildings include cities, towns, fire districts, and/or incorporated villages, and all other governmental incorporated units except for school districts. And you can download the form on their website. All right, we're down to highway and bridge weight postings. Sarah, I'll let you take this one.
So initially, we post our weight limits on our roads in, we have to do it before February 10th every year. So I just need this landmark to authorize the postings. What we do, there's no changes from last year, so we'll be posting the roads in the same weight limits as last year. Our seasonal, this allows us to do our seasonal restrictions in May. We'll post the seasonal restrictions active, but this is the overall weight limit postings of typically 24,000 pounds on all our roads.
So the motion would be then, is there a motion on this one?
Authorize me to, yeah, the motion would be to authorize me to register the weight
All right, so I'll make a motion to authorize our town administrator, Sarah Tully, to register the weight limits. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We're down to ARPA. I still have not received any more information from anyone. So we can move forward. We do have another meeting coming up this month where we can concentrate on this more. What we have agreed on, and probably should come in and sit down with Nancy so she can move forward, is the continued digitization of our land records. I think we agreed on the vault upgrades. Humidity control in the vault, I know there's a new dehumidifier has been ordered, but that's not coming out of ARPA. Let's see what she wanted. It is necessary to maintain low humidity in the vault to protect all of the land records, which have been placed in the care of the town. This would also prevent the growth of mold/mildew, protecting both general, public, and the records. And the cost is unknown, so she's, so we haven't approved that one because we don't know what the cost is. And I do need to get ahold of her over this new dehumidifier, so. No update on that. Cybersecurity, I really need to talk to Nancy because there is other funding out there now that Nancy mentioned, grant money. So that may come from other sources, if they get the grant. If not, there's ARPA money possibly available. Again, we've got the 2026 to spend this, December 31st, and December 31st, 2024 to allocate our office funds. The generator for this building was a priority. There has been an application in, Sarah. We haven't heard anything back from that. Okay? So we will have, that's a matching grant, so we've got to set money aside for that. Still not sure exactly until we find out. Look at our estimates and see what we, if we're going to get the grant from the state, so that's on hold. The hybrid meeting system, you have a note, didn't we authorize the Owl?
Yes.
Okay. I'll see Nancy so that gets ordered. And that would be an improvement over what Sarah's doing now with the laptop. Bowling chairs, we already bought, purchased those from ARPA. Playground equipment, we're going to have to make a decision on that. The Men and Rec was asking the full 65, but then we have to take a look at their reserve fund, see what's available for this.
Um, I'm not, I'm not, Larry, I had my meeting today with the AARP grant that we received for the social surveys, and it'll help pay for the picnic tables that will be placed at the law field, which I did get on order. We utilized a company that the Barstow ETO had ordered their picnic tables from, but I did receive five different quotes. Those will be, that's, it requires matching plans, so those will be paid for entirely by the AARP grant. But they, they told me about another grant opportunity that would be coming up here in January, and she's going to send me some additional information on it. That potentially could help, we could apply for that maybe for paying for a part of the Of course, it would be to meet their requirements, though.
This is, this is state, state of Vermont?
No, this is an AARP.
AARP.
Grant from AARP, and then she said it was the national organization that, that funds that grant program, and she believed that it was capped at $10,000, but that is a possibility.
So.
Last year, they were, at the national grouping, there were six that were awarded in Vermont.
Good. So the grant, you said the application is due in January of this month?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's due this month, and so as soon as I get that information from her, I was going to forward it to Liam and see if we would be able to meet the requirements in your project scope for the, for the Mendon Recreation Committee.
All right, and probably at no point did they say when, if you were successful, when the notification would be?
Would the notification would be?
No, yeah, the award, the award of the, the award of the, if you received the grant, the award, the grant, would?
Yeah, the court would actually be fairly quickly in the spring because they wanted to have construction done before November. But I had discussed with her that, you know, ordering playground equipment, the order time is about a year, because she said that you could apply for extensions from that. So it still might be a possibility.
Okay.
Initially, it looked like Mendon was, had a strong case to apply for that requirement.
So they want you to use that money within that year?
They, they, the grant intended to be used before November, but I did explain that there, even if we made decisions to go forward with the project, ordering playground equipment takes a year, so it wouldn't be installed, even if we made decisions this spring, it wouldn't be installed until the summer of 2024.
Right.
And she said that that would be okay as long as we applied for an extension, which is understandable that some of this equipment has that type of need and requirement.
And that's true, I think, but the Recreation Committee was stating that ordering whatever type of playground is decided on, it's like a year out before you receive it, or better. And it might be better now because of the supply chain.
And the committee that reviewed our application for the picnic tables would be the same committee that reviews their recommendations to the National Committee. So she also felt that because we, in this last grant, that we have a strong case to apply for funds going forward for the national level.
Good.
So that could be a significant opportunity to, to look into quickly.
All right, I'm going to hold up on ARPA for a minute. Chair of the Mendon Planning Commission, Terry Crosons, has just come in. I think she might have some information for us.
Yes, I wanted to report that there was a motion to recommend Fred Bagley as acting administrative officer, is how it's termed in statute, for the Mendon zoning administrator position. And the second vote being unanimously, it would be through April 1st. That's when Dr. Bagley would be leaving, actually, for his annual trip out of state. But we're so appreciative of him stepping in so that there is somebody who's able to process any applications in interim to give us more time to find a permanent zoning administrator.
Okay, that's good news. We have that on our agenda, so we've added that, so we'll be taking that up in a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. So I guess, I know, you know, trying to post the minutes that would reflect the vote as well, but just so in a way that was the decision.
Okay.
And I can, I can send you an email in print tomorrow.
Totally.
We'll have to have status for discussion later on.
Okay, great.
Thanks for all you do for the town. I tell you that every time I see you, and, yeah, you guys do a tremendous job.
Thank you, and I can tell you that Representative Harrison is keeping that close in mind in his work up in the State House.
Oh, that's good news, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Great, well, thank you all.
All right, thank you for getting, coming down, and we didn't know if a paper airplane was coming down with a notice on it, so, but.
I'll just shout if you need a little help.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, down to ARPA. So the playground equipment, that's on hold because of both looking at the reserve fund and this other AARP possibility for a grant, so we'll know by spring. That one we'll keep an eye on just because it takes so long for the, once you order that set, for it to come in. There was talk of additions to the salt storage building, but I have not, we haven't received anything on that. That's the additional, no, that's not the additional garage bay. Salt shed, that's on here, number 16. And the best is, the other one, the big one, is revenue replacement, which we'll be looking at when we get down to our budget. Yeah, that's all we've really decided on, so I don't have anything more until we get some more information. We'll know a little bit more when we get down with the budget in a few minutes, if we're going to use any ARPA money. Until we hear more, I think we're kind of on a hold till the next meeting, and we'll hit it again.
Larry, I did receive a phone call from the Easter Dakers Homeowners Association.
Yeah.
Just to inquire about the status of the decision-making, and I provided them with the timeline again, but they are anxious to receive word.
Right, and I think our big thing is just, there's some pieces missing that we need pricing on. We'll have one piece here momentarily. Might have to get together on the addition to the salt shed, if that's a really necessary, or no, that's a request? I don't know if you have any information on that, or?
I mean, it is a request, but maybe the landmark should take a slightly down I mean, it is a request, but maybe the select words should take us like this, sit down to the garage, so that you can look at the, um, the addition to the garage, get a feel for the garage improvements that are going to be required in the future, and the status of the use of the cold storage building, so that you guys are clear in making recommendations regarding the entire facility. The other thing that was on that project list was a PNC for the.
Yes.
Diesel.
Correct, yeah.
So, there, whether Nancy does it or I do it, it would be good to identify the projects that you have submitted funding to, um, so that we can start just seeing what might be left over.
All right, so, just starting with.
Short.
Right, just starting with a short list, from number one, the continued digitization. We have approximately, the request is for approximately fifty thousand dollars. And so, again, I've got to come in and narrow that down a little bit better with Nancy, if she's comfortable with that one. I think Val and I were, that's kind of a critical one, to preserve the land records. Vault upgrades, uh, according to the notes here, the current map cabinet is full. An additional roller shelving needs to be added, um, to accommodate the land records. Recording is, has increased dramatically during the last couple of years, and shelves are filling rapidly. That's approximately fifteen K, so we were good on that one, I think. Humidity control, I got to talk to Nancy, we just got an email regarding, uh, ordering a new dehumidifier, but I don't know how that factors in with here, her request. The cybersecurity, again, I have to see Nancy, because she was, just mentioned, there's another grant available for that. The office generator is, that's like almost number one here. We just need a final amount on the matching for that. Uh, you ended up with one or two estimates, Sarah, do you recall? I know you have.
Yeah, so that's, whether we get the grant or not, it would be, the project cost would be between eight and fifteen thousand dollars. So, eight thousand dollars if we get the grant, fifteen thousand dollars if we don't get the grant, but that's the range that we're talking about there.
All right, so that's a, round hole there, it's either eight or fifteen. If we don't get the grant, I can't imagine not getting that grant, but. And then, the timeline on hearing notification from the state on that grant? I'd have to dig, dig into that.
I don't know, but I will, I'll see if Rachel's any question has any idea on that, or if we can contact Vermont or any management to get an idea.
All right, so then, going down through the hybrid meeting system, approximately twelve hundred, we just agreed we approved that. Folding chairs, we already purchased that. Playground, we know we've probably set some money aside for that, we just don't know yet. Under storage shed, Sarah, it's got make necessary repairs to the old salt shed in order to use it as enclosed cold storage, cost unknown. There, there's sand in there now.
Yeah, so, we should find out for Bill what his, um, what a use of all these are and his potential use in the future.
So, just looking at that, it looks like Val and myself, and maybe you, should set up a meeting, obviously in the daytime, and set it up with Bill, um, just so he can show us these things, and, and then we can kind of, you know, force the, the issue that we need a, we need a cost on this. I mean, this is holding us up, we can't, you know, there's several, several things, I got to see Bill, see Bill. Yeah.
We can do a site visit, and then we have more information if we do decisions, um, as we move forward the next week.
Yeah. If we do it this week, I know there's a storm coming this weekend, so that rules out. Yeah, maybe not, sometime next week? Is that next week better than this week? All right, if we, we'll get together and throw some, some dates out for, to meet with Bill at the town garage.
I mean, I'll, I'll get the morning.
Yeah, see what's, I mean, he's, obviously weather is a factor with him, but.
Right.
Uh, it's kind of short notice this week, I know I'm kind of booked for the week. But, yeah, because, you know, between, let's see, what else? All right, the garage water system repairs, you know, we need to talk to Bill for that, that was approximately fourteen hundred. Garage bay, additional garage bay, cost unknown. Roof structure over the diesel tank, approximately two to five K. So, I guess we got to have a meeting, meeting with Bill to get these.
What looks necessary at the moment?
Wait, where are you at?
Has to comply with the roof structure?
Oh. Val just brought up a good point, that the, it's number fourteen on our original list, which is the roof structure over the diesel tank. Uh, this is in order to comply with regulation, so, there you go, that's a a good catch, I didn't see that before, so that, that's a, that's a must. And that's not much money. Uh, we, we're down to the salt shed. Oh, he's got an approximate two hundred K. I'm going to talk to Bill on that one. And then the garage generator, you know, they can use their welder down there, but that's a ten K. All right, so, in order to move forward, we need a lot of numbers here, and then after we get these priority lists, see what money we have, uh, and any money we want to leave over for a future budget, we'll do the math, and then these other appropriations, kind of hanging out there, we'll have more information on those. All right, so, Sarah, I'll leave it up to you to set up a meeting with Bill sometime next week. I think with Val, anytime after nine is good for you. Okay, anytime after nine. AM, and we'll go over and. Look at these projects and then, uh, make sure we, we get a, a approximate number on it, so we can set the money aside. All right, uh, the next on the agenda, we both have the fireworks and the burn permit ordinance. So, we'll do the burn permit ordinance first. It's fireworks. So, what we have is, we have an outdated, um, burn permit ordinance that goes back to two thousand and one. And there's, when you look at the, the burn permit ordinance, again, it's outdated. There's some things we know we have to change on it. And then, when you download and print the actual application, uh, that's your second one, which doesn't coordinate with what the ordinance says. And then, as we've changed fire wardens over the years, they have different ways they want to do, do things, so it's confusing for anyone that wants to get a burn permit, so the ordinance is going to have to be flexible enough so that at some point, they make you refer to the fire warden for the current update, because this one is out of date. The only thing I noticed, and we'd have to talk to our fire warden about it, when you print out the application to burn or kindle a fire, you know, it's got all the information they want, your name, obviously, the date, address, location, number of people that are going to be tending the fire, what equipment you're going to have on site, telephone and email, should they have to get ahold of you? You sign it, and then, uh, when you go on our website, you can send it in electronically, which is not referenced here in the ordinance. And there's also a couple of confusing things about, uh, right now, if you do a burn permit, you get it in on time, it has to, it has to be in by Thursday, uh, in order to have a weekend fire. Any other time, uh, uh, it tells you on here how far ahead you have to do it, to get the permit in during the week. But once you send this in, you don't have anything physically to present to anyone should the fire department show up if a neighbor complains about something. There's nothing, there's nothing, it comes back to the person that's going to kindle the fire, any, any kind of authorization or certificate other than what's on file with the fire warden. So, that's something that this whole thing is going to have to be discussed. I don't know if I, am I clear on that? So, you fill out this, there's an application you fill out. You either bring it back in, or, I guess you can put it out front in the, there's a box out there you can put it in. Or, according to our website, uh, you can send it in electronically. So, once you send that in, um, you know, you can make a copy yourself, but it's not anything, it's signed by the fire warden. So, if anyone came, the fire department or something, or a resident, a neighbor, and asked for some form of authorization you had to kindle the fire, you really, yeah, nothing to show. I mean, you're okay, because the fire warden has it, and the fire department has it. I don't know, there's something to look into, if there's something that can be emailed back, permit has been approved, and here's, here's the number. So, I think what we got to do is, um, kind of put this in Sess Ridge's app to take, the burn permit ordinance, and so, I don't know if I highlighted anything. We're going to do a fire in a minute, fireworks. So, it explains, um, right away that the, the town amendment pays the city of Rutland five hundred dollars for every call to the town. So, we know that's seven hundred and fifty dollars now. That's just what they're going to charge us. And so, I know recently there was one last fall, and Lemmy notified us that according to our burn permit ordinance, the most he could charge was five hundred dollars, even though across the town, seven hundred and fifty. Our previous constable used a different type of approach, where he went after the full seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, it's just going down line by line and updating it, and getting the figures right. But then, take this, this, and the information on our website, they all have to coordinate, right now, they don't. So, there's work to be done on this one. This one's kind of priority, I mean, not that we have that many, but we can't charge what we want to charge. All right, this is fireworks, I don't want to keep drawing that one down. All right, so, that's on hold, that's, there's work to be done, and, uh, I'll take it upon myself to get ahold of Seth, and see if he'll take this on as a project, so that everything is kind of coordinated.
Um, Larry, I would suggest also that we, um, we each take a look at the ordinances and identify areas that need to be, um, funded up, and then we need, you, Seth, and I to sit down and, um, come up with a draft changes that we present to the local board.
Right, yeah. So, originally, um, in the past, you filled out the permit, and I believe you called, it was a previous fire warden, uh, and he approved it, told you it was approved. And then, just before you kindled the fire, you had to call him again and get permission. Now, you don't. If you haven't, I think it's set up now, you get the permit in on time. If you don't hear anything at all, you're good to go. No phone call ahead of time, if, if, yeah, that's the way it's set up now. All right, so, all right, so we'll get ahold of Seth and sit down and work on this one. And now, we've got the fireworks ordinance. There's an application online, and by state of Vermont statute, the application has to be made at least fifteen days before the date of the event. And then there's a municipal permit for fireworks display. It looks like, I printed this out, the same thing, you fill it all out, name, address, information they need, email, dates, telephone, exact location, uh, special written conditions, if required by fire warden. That's leaves a little subjective. You sign it, and then at the bottom, uh, there is approval. Permit is not valid until verbal approval, verbal, that's critical here, is granted by the fire warden. And then they fill out the bottom, date, location, and then they sign it. But you're back to the same thing, as the person doing the fireworks receive, doesn't receive anything. That's something we have to look at.
Fred had brought up a good point about the, the gap of time and when you can fill this out.
Because you can get your fireworks permit in January for the fourth of July. It's within the past at least fifteen days, but if the fire conditions change dry spring or summer, the person granting the application and the permit might have to cause them not allow it to go ahead. Summer, or two winters on January.
It's true, it's, it's, you've got the, the okay to do it, and, right?
That, that, one, one concern that I have already is that, you know, less, but then forty dollars or something, you know, with a week or whatever, that anticipated weekend.
All right, so that's certainly got to be tweaked.
And we discussed whether, um, we could just post the permits on the listing. Um, in which case, an applicant promoted website and get a copy of an approved permit, and neighbors could also see that there was a permit issue, um, on a particular property. And that would go for bird permit and fireworks.
All right, and then, getting back to the point that Fred and Val were just talking about, Fred said, you have to have the permit, this is state statute, at least fifteen days uh, before the actual date of the event. So, if you were going to have the event July fourth, or any other day. July 4th or any other day, you fill out this application technically in January for July 4th. That's the way it's set now. So that needs to be written somehow so that permit request is closer to the actual day of the event. So everyone's on board and aware of it. The other subjective part, you, whoever is going to do the fireworks or the event, you have to submit a permit application to the Mendon Fire Warden or the Mendon Constable or other town official designated by the fire warden. So now we have a communication problem. If we want to do it so that the, the application approval is done by the town constable, at some point, the fire warden has to be involved in this. Because if it's July 4th and it's dry, and the fire warden has to approve or reject that. So it has to be written so that there is a communication process between who actually can issue the permit. And it would have to state that the permit is only approved by, well, approval by the fire warden.
We could work that the application be submitted no earlier than 15 days before and the fire warden could have a week to approve it. And the fire warden could have that week, which would only give a week gap between the actual event and the weather.
The history of this, maybe it was written like that because if you're going to plan an event, you know, events have to be planned way back in the future and you're kind of wondering, are we going to be able to do that? And if you're planning this event six months ahead of time, like a wedding, but you can't get your permit till just before, so.
I think, I think they're, Sue.
Go ahead.
I think they're, it's reasonable to be able to get the permit six months advance because oftentimes these are on events where there's multiple conflicting events and they have to tell a certain number of people to shoot them off or whatever, and so they have to book them a lot in advance to get that. But there still should be, I think, some within a week.
Right.
I think some additional language that the fire warden has to get verbal permission a week prior to the scheduled event, no matter when the permit was granted.
Sarah, did you hear that?
Yeah, we could have that on the permit that the, that the final approval is by the fire warden within a certain period of time of the event. Or this permit is not valid until the fireworks time deadline. Within a certain period of time of the event.
So that gives an event planner the opportunity to at least get the permit way in advance if they're, they're planning an event. But it's got to specifically state in the ordinance and on the permit for fireworks display that so many days before the event you have the permit, you have to get approval by the fire warden. Something to that effect?
Or maybe, maybe initial could be a conditional permit. Final permission by the fire warden, 10, 15, or 7, 15 days or whatever the primary actually will.
All right, yeah. This way, it makes the fire warden, keeps them up to date that there is a, there is a permit, there is a date, and he could say two weeks ahead of time.
Sorry.
Sorry, or he could say it's a go. But, you know, in two weeks, things may change, which is too bad, but he could, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's why the final approval from the fire warden needs to be closer to the event than, you know, to weather conditions that are going to be. So the, I think the initial permit can be reviewed by the fire warden to put any special conditions in there. You know, whether they, they say, oh, we want to plant off the fireworks right near the structure. And he says, no, 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 you've got to, you've got to do it way over there at the end of the field. So that they can, he can put some requirement on the state's operation of discharging them. But then that final approval right before the event would be to ensure that weather conditions prevent the state's operation and discharge of the fireworks.
Right. So that would have to be specific in the ordinance and on the application that, you know, you can get it way in advance. Obviously, you can't do it. Has to be made before, 15 days before the event for the last minute people. But if someone did get the application in January, February or whatever, for a July 4th event, there's no way a fire warden can sign off on that way in advance. So he would be, he would have a copy of the permit, knowing there is going to be fireworks on such and such a date. And then he'd have to keep an eye on that to see what the conditions are to do a final approval. So you're right, you've got to sit down and tweak that out. And then the ordinance, again, has, has to be updated because it, it, nothing, it's got to match. Everything's got to match here, so.
Right, and because everything has to match and there's multiple parties that need to be received communication that this approval has been granted, that's why the written permit is so important to have that paperwork trail so that the fire department knows what's going on as well as, see, again, a little confusing with how fire wardens issue burn permits in other towns because the state law says that you can give, you can give verbal approval. Our, our ordinance, the intent was to have a written permit that you could provide to the fire department so that they know where we've given permission to kindle fire. So if they get caught about it, that they're researching whether they have contact information for the permit team to make sure that the fire didn't get away from them. Then they need to set the fire terms. And this all has to be able to happen in a manner of minutes.
So like on this one, which is different than the burn permit, the Mendon Fire Warden and/or again Mendon Constable shall, following inspection of the application, inspection of the application, either approve or reject such application and issue a written fireworks display permit or fireworks display denial. So the applicant will get something in writing, according to this ordinance, either an approval or denial. But it's got to be tweaked so that the fire warden, you know, we've got, it should be the, the constable probably, and then, but the fire warden has to be involved in it. And then right down towards the end, it has to get an approval by the fire warden. An approved permit shall be issued if the fire warden and/or town constable determine that the proposed display will be of a character that said display will not be hazardous to any property or endanger any person when enacted as proposed to the permit application. And then the other thing Fred will throw at you here. The approved display shall not begin before the hour of 7:00 a.m. nor extend past the hour of 10:30 p.m. That's still okay with you or?
But I, it fits with our noise ordinance.
Okay.
If it, I'd be glad to help tweak it.
Uh, all right, Sarah, how do you want to set this up? So Fred has volunteered to tweak it. You know, I mean, all this comes back to the select board in the end anyways. We're back to Leeny and Seth again, have to weigh in on this, how they, how they want to do it, so.
Right, so organize the thoughts that Fred submitted before as well as the changes that you write both of the ordinances and all do the same thing. They can have a copy just to flip. For, um, Leeny and Seth to look at, as the fire warden and the constable would steer them in the right direction. They're both new to their positions as partners. Seth's been there for a little while, but, um, they, they have interacted ordinances before. So, um, but certainly the communication and how everything is submitted definitely needs their input.
All right, so this can start probably mostly by email. So we can get started with Fred if he wants to take a copy, tweak it, and then, well, I, from there, I think we go to, to Leeny and Seth and Sarah. And to see, you know, those two have got to weigh in on it, how it's going to work because of that. The end or the fire warden and the, because the fire warden could issue one according to this and not notify the constable or vice versa. So it's, that's got to be tweaked. And to the point where, you know, getting down towards the actual date of the event, the fire warden is the one that has to jump in there to say yea or nay. And not, you know, two days before the event. You'll have to look at it long range. All right, so Fred's going to volunteer to take the ordinance, do some tweaking. It'll go to, to you, Sarah, to Leeny, Carter and Seth Bridge for their input. And when you get some kind of a product, send it to Val and myself. Yeah, and when everything's together, we'll put it on the agenda. Okay? You've got copies of the ordinance and everything. You're good. Yeah, they're on, they're online anyway, so, on our website. All right, we're down to, well, you know what, let's do, we had, we said we're going to do it flexible to appoint the zoning interim zoning administrator under business, and we are under business, so we'll do that now. So Chair of the Men and Planning Commission, Terry Crisone, has come down and said it was unanimous to appoint Fred Bagley as interim zoning administrator. We thanked her for getting together and getting that in that together. You will have to pick up your lawn signs, you know, that you put out there to get this position. So.
So the only odd questions I have are just a little bit of wording in. Because the zoning regulations actually say that the planning commission recommends a zoning administrator. It's called actually administrative, administrative director, I think is what the actual term is. But so there's a provision where they recommend a full-time zoning administrator for a three-year term. There's also a separate part of the zoning that they can recommend in a, an acting zoning administrator who's there to fill in for them. Full-time administrator in his or her absence, illness, vacation or whatever should somebody should come up. I don't, I don't know where we've ever had an acting zoning administrator that's, um, appointed, so, and there is no actual term in the zoning regulations of the use of the word interim. So I leave it to you as to whether, whether that's worth parsing all that little stuff.
Okay.
Or whether what term you want to use to describe the night.
And.
You can actually make that simple. You could just call them the zoning administrator with a term expiring on April 1st of 2023. If we happen to find someone to fill a more permanent role between now and April, we'll just work with Fred on that transition if we want them to start prior to April 1st. He would just need to resign and then you appoint the other person interim or as the permanent. You just appoint a zoning administrator with a, with a term.
And I could, and should that delightful event actually happen, then I'd be willing to serve as the acting zoning administrator, you know, backing up the full-time zoning administrator who would come on board. A separate paragraph of the zoning range for whatever.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you coming forward to fill this gap, so. Thank you for that.
So I check in with Sarah tomorrow?
So. Well, let's do the, the appointment first. So I'll make a motion to appoint Fred Bagley as zoning administrator with a term to expire April 1st, 2023. Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, okay. You are officially our zoning administrator.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I would check in with Nancy.
So Sarah, the next step is for me to meet with Nancy tomorrow?
Nancy, can she, you, um, can show you the desk with the pending files that Susannah
Yeah.
had been working on? Did you receive a contact information to, for Susannah or no?
I have, and, yeah, she's, she's agreed to come down and walk me through some of the files and whatnot. I don't know what happens tomorrow, but I will come in, I will come in tomorrow and talk to Nancy and you, if you're here, and see if there's anything else I have to assign or or whatever, but start working my way through. I could, but I know there are some outstanding, you know, violation notices and so forth around town and, as I said.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need any other paperwork in order to start working. The appointment by the select board authorizes you to do the job. It's not an elected position, so you don't have to take the hold of office or.
Okay.
Which is what, you know, Nancy would do.
And Dick Val has already promised me he has a potential violation on the airability. He's going to bring my attention tomorrow, so.
After a good start.
And, and the main thing, Larry, what, as I said earlier, was in case somebody shows up wanting to apply a building permit, and there's no mechanism.
That's the important one, yeah.
Some of the violations, some of the outstanding violations have been there for months and years. You guys just to get some progress on them. The main thing is just that they keep the gears moving on. People who want to do things, especially coming into the spring of the season.
All right, so you're going to be making a whopping $18 an hour.
But I made yesterday.
Yeah. And then, you know, we're supposed to do 10 hours a week, but, you know, you're going to have to see what it's going to take you to do your job. You'll know, you'll know right after.
If it only takes five hours a week, I'm more than happy to not be paid for him.
Well, you're, you're paid by the hour, so if you're at five, you get paid by.
So, um, I'll quote Fred. Jesse will be able to give you a time sheet.
Okay.
And a schedule on where, when you submit your time sheet.
I'll be in tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that's Jesse.
All right, you're now an employee of the select board, so. And thanks again for doing this.
The approval will be in the pudding.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, Fred.
Bye, Sarah.
Okay, we're down to select board appointment from now until town meeting in March of this year. We have been advertising going back some time towards the end of November of last year, so November, December, now into January. We only have one person stepping forward for that position, which was Seth Bridge. And I did contact Seth to just say, you know, this, this meeting's out if we made the appointment. You'd be down to one meeting in January, two in February, and, and town meeting, you would be there. But most likely, you wouldn't have to do any kind of a presentation. Did you still want to do, take on the position with that short term left? And he stated he was still interested in the position. So since he did step forward, and we've kind of dropped this a little bit, or I did, I think we're at the point where we have to make a decision here, so. I'll make a motion to appoint Seth Bridge to the Men and Select Board for term ending. for term ending, uh, at town meeting, 2023. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those say aye? Aye, okay. Uh, we'll have to get information from Seth as far as an email, so information can go to him. Uh, I can call him just to tell him to come in. He's got to take the oath to come in and see, um, Nancy. Community Center, um, this kind of ties in with our articles. So there was a request from Megan Smith for, uh, $10,000 for continuing the, the study of a community center in Mendon. Uh, and, uh, Sarah had sent out an email with the different options, uh, that was addressed to Megan and to Val and myself. Uh, number one, uh, again, it was a $10,000 request. The select board can add a line item to the general fund budget, which we're going to be working on here in a minute. Uh, this is money, if approved by the voters, would be available within the fiscal year. If unspent, it does not carry forward into the next year. Number two, the select board can add an article to the warning asking voters to approve creating a community center reserve fund with the funding of the $10,000. If approved by the voters, this is at town meeting, uh, the fund would be created and the 10K expense incorporated to, into the FY '24 budget. The balance of reserve funds remain in the account and do not expire at the end of the fiscal year. Option number three, Mendon on the Move can submit a petition to get this question added to the agenda for town meeting. In order to do this, the petition must be signed by 5% of the voters and submitted to the town clerk by January 19th of this year. And then Nancy would confirm how many signatures this is, but historically it's around 45. But I want to point out, uh, if they went this route, they want to see Nancy to make sure that number is right. So, uh, of the three choices, um, I'll just state where I am on this one, and then Val can weigh in. Um, you know, at this point, we have been, Eric continue and Will here in a few minutes, uh, working on this budget to, um, to get it down. Um, it is at, uh, uh, we're not going to do the budget right now, but it, it, we're, we have an increase of, uh, 3%. And we were trying to look at that to get down, so adding 10 grand is, is going to really make it difficult on this budget. Um, our budget, proposed budget increase, uh, over our current budget that we're under, which ends June 30th of this year, we have an increase of $46,274. So it'd be really difficult to add another 10 grand to that, so, um, at this point, want to leave it up to the voters, um, you know, I'm sure Megan will want to do a presentation to the voters at town meeting in March. So I, in looking at, uh, number two, the select board can add an article to the warning asking voters to approve creating a community center reserve fund in the amount of $10,000. And we have seen the survey, um, that, the results of the survey, and, you know, again, the, the voters really need to discuss this, and town meeting would be a good time to do that. Again, you're, you're back to the handful of people that show up, but that's a start, because we, we have a hard time getting information on a lot of these projects, so... So at this point, uh, I don't think we need a motion till we get down to business under I, Articles for Warning for Town Meeting.
So if we chose number three?
Yep.
This would put it in, in Megan's hands completely?
Correct, yeah, they would, they would have to...
She would be putting a presentation on?
Well, she's going to have to do it, it's her project, and it's not, you know, it's not our project, so there's, it's nothing that, um, we would be doing any kind of a presentation on.
And then she would be asking for the $10,000, that would be her question?
Right, that would be the, the article, um, town moderator would call that. Uh, read the article and then the discussion. Well, Megan would probably do a presentation, uh, that probably should, and then, uh, the moderator would open it up to the floor for discussion.
And number two, it would look as if we were asking?
Well, um, number two would say there, you know, is, well, I don't know how the article's going to be written right now, but it's, it's, you're right, that's a point. It, it would look like the select board is putting it on there as a, uh, as an article. Somehow we'd have to clarify that it is a, it was a request from, um, Megan Smith in Mendon on the Move for a community center, you bring up a good point.
I mean, that's what, that's the only reason I would lean towards number three. Just because we, we're still figuring out.
All right, so...
That's just my opinion.
Yeah, all right, we'll bring that up again, uh, on our, on Articles for Warning. Okay, good point. All right, budget. Uh, okay, right now, um, let's see. Right now, our budget stands at Sarah has indicated that is a 3% increase. The, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, the increase from the proposed budget to our current budget, again, which ends June 30th of this year, is an increase of $46,274. That being said, um, it's kind of my desire to get this down below 3% by using, um, ARPA money, and the question is, how would you use ARPA money? Whatever, if we did use ARPA money to get the budget down, um, where would it go? And obviously, uh, your first one would be looking at a reserve fund, mostly under the infrastructure budget. You got that out, okay. And then you're not actually underfunding the reserve fund. What you're doing is, you would be taking the allocation out under that line item for the reserve fund. The select board would specifically make a motion of whatever that amount is so that that amount is set aside, it stays in the ARPA account. And then, um, when the invoice comes in, say for paving at the end of the season, a portion of that would come out of the ARPA fund. It's not really any more complicated than that. So looking at the reserve fund, again, we're doing the infrastructure right now. Uh, let's see. All right, we, we had $110,000 originally in the Highway Improvement Reserve Fund. At our last meeting, we lowered that to $104,000. And then, so that's kind of what the target I'm looking at, to lower this again. But whatever amount we lower it by, we set the ARPA's money funding aside specifically to fill back in on Highway Improvement Reserve Fund. So Sarah, the question is, now we have to do some math. What amount would get us down to somewhere under three? We have everything in...
Yeah, it's another $215. So if you made, if you made that motion for, um, as you worked for the Highway Improvement Fund, and reduced it by 6,500 instead of 6,000?
Thank you, I'll get this back in.
That would accomplish the same thing. But remember what the effects of that is going to be next year's budget? When we're going to need to raise the backup?
Yes, but at that same point, looking at the ARPA funding, which again, uh, has to be allocated by December 31st, 2026, another chunk of ARPA funding, um, could still be set aside so that we have, if they had to do it, the select board had to do it on the next budget cycle, the money would still be there to do it. So you, now you're, you're looking at doing this for two budget cycles with ARPA money.
Yeah.
So that, you're right, you're right. And, I mean, uh, the amount going into the reserve fund changes, but in the end, uh, the money that would come out of the reserve fund is now going to come out of ARPA. So you just mentioned 60?
It's the same thing with the reduction to the garage maintenance fund. The garage maintenance fund, you also reduce from 8,000 to 6,000, or no, from 10,000 to 8,000, a reduction of $2,000, assuming you're going to pay for that, um, the cover improvements for the diesel tank.
Right, and...
It, it normally would have been paid for out of the garage maintenance fund, and that won't be the case.
Right, and...
So those two line items?
I think, Val and I are in agreement for that project. Val did pick up on that's actually a requirement, it needs to be done, so... So I think on the, so that reducing from the 10 to the 8, I mean, we were okay with that one. So I'm just looking at the $104,000 in the Highway Improvement Reserve Fund to lower that, and you said by 6,500 gets us down to what percentage? Can, uh, can you do that now, or how much?
Yeah, it would be 2.9%.
All right, so just to start with, although we've, we've already allocated some of this money, from the, the ARPA funds, we have, we had originally in our ARPA account $302,214 and change. And then we have already spent some money on a few things, uh, chairs, a couple of other things. Uh, we have already made some allocations, um, that we have agreed on. Um, haven't totaled those up yet, because we're still waiting for numbers. It just leaves a lot of money in the ARPA fund. So we've still got some $200,000 in that ARPA fund to use up for somewhere. And again, I think, um, you know, this will fall back on, on Val, but another chunk of that should be set aside for another year from now, uh, just in case you need it, like what we're doing right now. So Val, we're at, take another 6,500 out of ARPA. Uh, it's going to reduce this down to 2.9. Not a big difference, we're at 3. Good with that, or want to think, use more ARPA to get it down to 2.7? It's just, it's a, it's a number, it's a game, it's a number now, just to, to use up some of the funds. And Sarah, we need to do this right now, right? There's no more delay on this.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to prepare a bunch of documents for you guys to sign the warning at the next meeting, um, and I'm in the process of pulling together the town report, and that is a lot of analysis that goes into reports for the town report. So, um, it's best if you get the budget by line.
I mean, I, this is just me personally, I'd be happy, comfortable with, with 2.7. I'm just throwing that out there, what it would get us down. And, you know, during the budget presentation, uh, inflation's, it's going to play a big part on this, and I, I would doubt anyone, uh, knows that we're going to come in with a, a level funded budget or, um, a 0.7 like last year. All right, so why don't you and I tweak it down, just to see what it's going to take? And then we'll run it by Val, can we do that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Val.
Val, do you have any other suggestions to look at?
No, I was just looking at, I was, I went back to the playground and was just thinking of the possible grants that we just found out if, um, but it's just a gamble if we took ARPA money out for even, say, half of that, for that $10,000, that could be possible. That's, I was, I don't know. Because we don't know.
You know, using it for the budget, um, the plus side is that it, it benefits all the taxpayers in Mendon.
Um, Larry, just the number for you, um, that would be looking for another $3,500 to get it to 2.7.
All right, so Val and I can do this now.
And if you just looked at, I mean, it, it promises that you got to meet on the highway improvement, but if you looked at the Highway Improvement Fund and took a road and paved it and took it off the schedule completely from the Highway Improvement Fund timeline, that would give you 10 years of reserving, but we're on a 10-year reserving schedule. So committing some ARPA funds to pave a road, which you might be looking at, um, you know, $50,000 of ARPA funds, that could buy you a number of years, 10 years, of that lowered appropriation amount going into the Highway Improvement Fund.
All right, that's a good...
Let me just pull up...
Yeah, pull that out and just run that by us again.
Pull up that timeline, and, I mean, again, the wrinkle in this plan is inflation.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, our roads are, are way unglad in cost over there than what we anticipated. But so far, we're okay. You just don't really see your goals.
We don't. All right, so our goal now, or my goal, or Val's, is, is looking at a 2.7% increase over our, our current budget. Options are to, we got a couple of options, uh, going back to the reserve fund, uh, highway improvement of reducing that again, um... of reducing that again. Uh, right now would be by 10 grand to get it down to 2.7. And the other option again, Sarah, is?
Is to fully fund a paving of a road out of the Highway Improvement Fund, so you would take it off the schedule. Um, we, taking it, we would pay for it and take it off of the planning for it in the Highway Improvement Fund, which could buy you 10 years of that lower appropriation.
All right, so if we can get this down to the 2.7 by making the adjustments, then I think we have a budget.
So that would be putting $100,000 in the Highway Improvement Fund instead of 100,000.
Yeah. But then we, we have to make sure that Val and I specifically allocate that money out of ARPA to, to replace that. So right now, we had, we started out with 110, that got down to 104, and now we're making another adjustment down to?
100,000.
And that gets us at the 2.7?
Um, and so looking at the timeline of the reserve fund, coming up, we have resurfacing new equity road for Brookwood, which would cost between 30 and 50,000 dollars.
Uh, the timeline on those roads is this year?
Yeah, um, no.
No.
We're planning for the future.
Planning, planning down the road, yes, so to speak, sorry.
Yeah, we're planning for the future, so really what I just need is a commitment that we're going to spend some ARPA funds on that paving, um, in order to lower the appropriated amount over the next, um, you know, I, I haven't worked with the timeline, but we potentially, if you give us $50,000, we could lower it for 10 years.
At 500, yeah, a year?
Yeah, I mean, again, anyway, goal first hot, first off is, is to benefit all the taxpayers in Mendon with the ARPA money that came from the federal government. Uh, and we got quite a chunk of it left over because we haven't spent that much because we're still waiting and waiting for numbers, so. All right, so if we, you would actually be looking, I mean, it should be a motion down in writing that we are setting aside, just say, $50,000 for future?
For highway improvement.
For highway improvement.
Yeah.
Just 5,000 a year, right? Would be done.
All right, and that gets, gets our budget down.
That's a good plan.
Yeah, and we're done with the budget. Okay.
So the appropriation amount to the Highway Improvement Fund will be changed to $100,000.
All right, that doesn't need a motion because we're working on the budget. All right, that's down to 100, got it?
And garage improvement is that, um, six? No, eight, I'm sorry, I keep saying that. Um, if you had 8,000, what's it 10? We lowered it to 8. That might have to go back up this year, but that is, $2,000 is a lot easier to, to manage.
All right, so we probably should make a motion to set that as $50,000 from ARPA funds specifically for highway improvement.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll do that. I'll make a motion to appropriate $50,000 of the ARPA funding to be used specifically for highway improvement. Val is seconded. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So as far as I'm concerned, we have a budget.
Yeah.
Okay. There's still time to tweak, but it, go ahead.
I'm just going to look at the amount.
Right.
So.
So like, at, at the next meeting, just in case there is some tweaking there, we'll make, we'll make the motion for the final, the final number of the budget.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So that way, if there's any, you know, lax changes as I work through that timeline, um, we don't have to rework it, but essentially now your budget is set at $1,295,460.
Correct. All right, yeah, so if there's any tweaking between now and our next meeting, it's not a big deal, but I think we probably should be able to come in with this. And that again puts us at 2.7 or somewhere right in there.
Yeah.
We'll finalize that, okay. All right, so just in case there's any tweaking, the motion to approve this, the budget for 23 fiscal year, uh, 23, 2023, 2024 will be made at the next meeting, it'll be on our agenda. That's a big one, out of the way. Is that fine? All right, town meeting. So, um, we have two locations available, actually three, including the town garage, but that's not the ideal location. The two locations are the, I think it's the district, District 3 V-Trans building, just coming into the Mendon, on the west side, opposite the beginning of the Mendon Mountain Apple Orchard. That is available to us. There's no cost involved. It's a large meeting room, certainly would hold the number of people that we have. The acoustics in there are excellent with the acoustical ceiling and the carpeting. Not even sure you'd need a PA system. The chairs are there in another room to be set up and then taken down after the meeting. There's tables there. There's a video or even a smart board available, but I don't think we need that. Parking, it is ADA compliant into that meeting room. You come in on the west side, it's, it's flat and level. There is a small parking space there. It's not designated currently, but we designate it for handicap parking or anyone that didn't want to walk a distance. The other parking lot, it, it's above, and you got to walk down to the west side of the building to get in. Not a huge parking lot, but I think it would be sufficient. People are going to park if they have to on the sides of the road. The email that we got indicated that it's possibility that the businesses out behind, there's a road or driveway that goes out to the building, I believe that Poccat, their plumbing is out there, and I think they own the building. They've used that in the past for parking, we could approach them to see if that's okay. Meetings at night, so I don't think that's a problem. Not sure about the lighting, haven't looked at it at night. Driving by the church where we did a whole meeting, and that was kind of a difficult venue of getting in and out, but that's, that's an even smaller parking lot, and I know we had parking all over the place on that one, so. So that's available to us. In the email, we would have to make sure we kind of monitored so no one went upstairs because there's no way to block that off. There are bathrooms downstairs, so it's a great spot. Second spot that's available is the Vista Senior Living. Looking at the building, we would be going into the entrance on the left, which has steps, but also on the west side, there is a door that would be ADA compliant. There's no steps involved in that one. Parking certainly is not an issue there, there's all kinds of parking. There is, there is lighting there. The room itself is, is, it's a huge room, has pillars in it, I don't think that'd be a problem. The acoustics is sufficient, but probably not as good as the V-Trans garage. Let's see, I, uh, we have the permission to use it. I did make another phone call just recently to see if there'd be any fee attached to that, and I'm going to be called back at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning regarding that. We would have to bring our own chairs up to that, I don't think we have to bring any tables, that's the only, the only other thing, so. I don't know if I'm missing anything, anything else that we would need, so. Again, we don't know what the weather's going to be like at town meeting as far as snow conditions and road conditions. I think it looks like both places are maintained. So we need to pick, pick up, or pick a location. So I kind of described everything. This is something you really would like to know now, there's no reason not to give you a decision.
Yeah, I mean, um, the decision of location at town meeting, I have to include on the warning that you're going to be signing the, the next meeting, so if you could make some sort of decision, you know, contingent on receiving information about that fee, um...
All right, so right now, they're both really nice sites. I, and I'll throw it over to Val. I, I, right now, I would probably lean towards the V-Trans building for our town meeting, it just really is, coastically and everything, I think, is, the parking is a little bit an issue, but I just think that's be a good venue for us.
Yeah, I think any, the only thing that would keep people from having, maybe having enough parking would be snowbanks if we had a lot of snow, but I would, I would uncomfortable with V-Trans, V-Trans location.
All right, Sarah, I don't know if we need a motion on this, but we have a consensus of the, using the V-Trans building for town meeting.
Yeah, just some direction to, um, include it on the warning, it's like, we don't really need a motion. Um, and then you're going to, if you could just follow up with Vista?
Well.
You were communicating with them via email or?
Uh, actually, yeah, both, both, no, phone calls. And then I just called them a few minutes ago before the meeting regarding if there was a fee involved. That may make a difference or not, and there may may not be a fee on that one. So, yeah, they, they, they need to know one way or another, and as does V-Trans. They want to know, and when we make a final decision, they want to know. I said, we, I, I informed them, we'd let, let you know one way or another if we were coming or not, so.
All right, so if you could contact Vista?
I will do that.
And then I'll contact V-Trans so that we get all of our customer on what we need to do for access facilities.
All right, you're going to take V-Trans, I'll do Vista. Okay. All right, articles for the town meeting. So we have the usual. Article, shall the town authorize the select board to set the rate of compensation for non-sourred employees and town officials appointed midterm? That one always stays the same. Article 2 will be our budget, which we have a number now, but that'll, that'll be in there, just in case there is any tweaking. And then all your other articles will be for appropriations, for those that have not changed their request amount, those will all be back in there. That usually takes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Seven articles at least. Just going, looking at last year, we had the ARC, Marble Valley Regional Transit District, our SVP Retired Senior Volunteer Program, Frontline Mental Health Services, VNA and Hospice, Southwest Council on Aging, and Wonder Feet Kids Museum. Probably Nancy would have an update on that. I don't have any more information on that. So last year, Article 12, shall the town adopt all budget articles and public questions by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA, et cetera, et cetera. Like, I don't remember us doing that last year, but apparently we did. I don't know.
That's, that's called the budget, just by Australian ballot instead of the floor.
Yeah, and that's been done twice. I know we did the church, it gets, it gets voted down, so at this point, I don't feel we should put that back in there. Gone two for two on that one. Okay, now we're down to this one. The article for community center. Uh, let's see, we, we have three options. Again, we have an immediate consensus not to add it to our budget as a line item. We're down to either we put it on the warning or, as the process has gone through, on the community center, Megan has kept this on the loop. You know, we've gone from a couple different locations. Again, it's not, at this point, it's not a select board project, it is a community center committee project. Val has brought up a point that if it's an article, does it look like the select board is putting that article in there, which would be number two? Again, we want to leave this up to, for discussion and for the voters at the floor at town meeting to make this decision. So that's the informational piece that will come from Megan. So then option 3 was, there'd have to be a petition, again, signed by the 5% of the voters, and have to be in by January 19th. That's kind of short notice, it's 10 days. She, oh, there's no doubt she could, so. Let me just read this, the select board can add an article to the warning. Well, if we added it, Val and I need to come to consensus on this. If we added it, if we, the select board added it to the warning as an article, for that $10,000. if we, the select board added it to the warning as an article, uh, for that $10,000 request, um, we would have to speak first, um, just explaining that it was a request from the community committee, uh, Megan Smith will be speaking on it, uh, kind of give a history of, of, the select board has been kept informed of this, um, but it is not our project, we're just leaving it up to the committee, community committee, and then eventually it's left up to the voters, the, the 10K. Uh, I'm just looking at, no, today's the 9th, and she'd have to have it in by 19th, and I, oof, that's, that's, could be a taller, so, but we'll let you weigh in on this first.
Well, I, I just, I, um, I just think my mind is made up, I, I feel, I feel like she can, um, get the signatures, I know she doesn't have a lot of time.
But in the end, if, you know, just, just going over the two options, if we decide to put it on as an article, it'll be worded, whatever, get the official wording, uh, shall the voters approve 10,000 for, um, for the community center, uh, for creating a community center reserve fund, very specific. If Megan goes out and gets the signatures, the article's still gonna read the same, it doesn't change.
We don't have control over that, so her petition can word that question the way she wants to word that question. Um, it, it does have to be, um, I mean, it has to be legal, the question needs to be in a format that is legal, but, um, she, a, a petition, the article, can be worded, um, if we, we, we made the recommendation to her that the reserve fund, if creating a reserve fund is the best option for the project, because the, um, the money would stay in the account, um, crossing fiscal years, but, um, if she didn't word it to create a reserve fund, then it would just be in the budget, it would just be in the 2023, 2024 budget.
So, the recommendation to put it into the community center reserve fund was your recommendation, and we don't know specifically what her request was, she didn't request a, to put it in a reserve, create a reserve fund?
No, she requested 10,000 dollars for the community center, um, there's two ways to do that, you're putting it in the general fund budget, or you approve it as an expense for the general fund budget, or you put it in a reserve fund. When we had a project like saving for the new town office or even expenses with our needs, we created a reserve fund.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good.
So, yeah, so not knowing how she specifically wants to do that, um, creating a community center reserve fund versus having 10K added to the budget, um, you know, we don't know which way she wants to do this.
Just because, um, we can sure it goes into a reserve fund, in, in the future, if the project does not come to fruition, uh, you can just go back to ask the voters to transfer that money to a different reserve fund or to give it back to the voters and dissolve the fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, the voters would have control for the future as well.
Okay.
All right.
That's what I want, I want them, I want the voters to have control.
Correct, yeah, yeah, and that, you know, it'll be interesting, um, you know, other than the budget at town meeting, this will probably have the most, possibly, potentially the most discussion, uh, from what I'm looking at so far, so. So, you know, I, I think, again, I would agree with Val, it should be in a community center reserve fund, uh, because, you know, for some reason, if it doesn't go any further, then, you know, the money goes back to, at some point, to the taxpayers. And the only other issue now is, is if we do option three, um, she now, or the committee would be in charge of the wording of that article, provided it's legal, of course, uh, to do the reserve fund, or if she wanted it, something, to be actually put in the 10K into a budget. Um, but it's that short window now, I, I don't know if that's fair or not, sorry, all right, so, Sarah, we will, I think, I'll check with Val again, option two?
Yeah.
Which is, um, it's gonna be a warning, the select board will put it as a warning to approve creating a community center reserve fund with the funding of 10K. I don't know of any other articles at this point.
Um, as far as the appropriation articles, there has been some feedback at town meetings to combine, um, combining it in one article, um, you've made the decision this year that if a, an appropriation requested to save the amount this last year, that they didn't need to submit a petition?
Correct.
So maybe intercede those organizations under one article, and those that require a petition to be separate articles?
Uh, last year, they were individual articles for the appropriations, uh, and then a, a resident made a motion to put them all under for one vote.
Yeah.
You're saying we could put an article that puts them all under one vote?
Was it two or three years? Was it just two? If they had asked two years in a row, or was it three years? I don't know why I thought it was three.
No, those, those were different suggestions, what you decided for this year was if they were funded last year, and they weren't asking for an increase?
Yeah.
Then they could just submit a request, and then we would add it as an article, you would leave the petition requirement. If it's an increase in their amount, requested amount, or if it's a new organization that was not funded last year, you were requiring a petition.
Correct.
So you could combine the organizations that were funded last year into one article, or you could just word up separately and allow the motion being from the floor to the house.
Yeah, it, I, I think it looks like the select board's taking control by making one article, it's better to let the voters go down through than discuss it, and, you know, and, you know, if it's like last year, they wanna make the motion to do them all under one, then that's fine. Okay. All right, there's nothing under, listen, nothing, under articles, we are at adjournment, you have anything else there? No one here?
No.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to adjourn? You wanna stay here?
Sure. I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second, and we are adjourned at 7:00 PM.